Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first school meeting of the school year. Potential new committee meeting. Our first order of business is to approve the meeting minutes for the August twenty-fifth. Can you retrieve again a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting dated August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have two warrants to approve. Can I get a motion for the payables warrant?
Make a motion to approve the payables warrant dated September sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for payroll warrant?
I'll make a motion to approve payroll, payroll warrant dated nine-two-twenty-two.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Highlight on schools with introduction of new staff.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this is always a privilege to introduce our new staff each September. Uh, obviously, we know, uh, hiring has been daunting in all fields, uh, over the last year, and obviously, that's why we'll improve that to be the case. We have, I think, thirteen or fourteen new teachers. We have a number of new parents. We have a new school nurse. Uh, I know Chrissy Morrison was introduced, uh, in August as our payroll coordinator. Uh, and I did let everyone know here that generally, this is a very, very pleasant meeting and a very kind committee, so, uh, I asked them not to be stressed at all. Uh, since our office is already, I'm just gonna have each person come up and introduce themselves and talk about their role in the applicable warrants. Thank you.
Michelle, oh, actually, Kyle.
Hi, uh, my name is Kyle Anderson. I'm the new physics and astronomy teacher here. Uh, so I teach grade-nine physics, introduction to physics, and also astronomy at the current moment, and will teach AP physics next year.
Hi, I'm Michelle Zummel. I'm the new assistant principal at Major Edwards Elementary. Uh, hello, Michelle.
See how easy this is?
Yeah.
Um, hi, I'm Amanda Farner. I teach high school math. Um, I am teaching Algebra One and geometry, um, this semester.
Hi, I'm Catherine Brott. Um, I'm one of the new district-wide SLPs, so I'm at both the middle, middle school and elementary school. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Carlson. I'm the new guidance counselor for six through twelve, last names A through L.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Horgan. I'm your new ESL teacher for the middle school and the high school. Nice to meet you.
Hola, mi nombre es Paula Green. So, I'm the Spanish teacher at the high school, so, um, I have the upper levels in Spanish and English as well.
Hello, I'm Mr. Howard, and I am the other new SLP, and I'm at the middle school and here for, oh, this is the middle school, middle school and the major upper.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Hughes, and I teach first grade at Major Edwards.
My name is Kater Work, and I'm the new guidance counselor at Major Edwards Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Amelia Rainville. I am at the high school teaching art.
Hi, I'm Jody Russell. I'm one of the preschool teachers at Major Edwards.
Adam Richardson, who now you know, wasn't able to make it tonight for prior commitment, and we do have a new kindergarten teacher, Julie Foster. Julie Foster, who's gotten acclimated right away. She was a very late hire, and we're happy to have her as well. Uh, as I stated earlier, I'd like to commend the principals, Alex and Chris, for their efforts hiring.
I'd like to, uh, make sure that I introduce, um, a very special, uh, aunt herself. She's a member of the class of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, she is now teaching history. Uh, Ms. Jenna Osborne, once you go on, uh, wasn't that long ago that I was handing Jenna her diploma. She's now a licensed teacher, and she's teaching history. With Austin Kellit for the whole first half of the year. I went through the class today, and the kids were absolutely enjoying, uh, her lesson, and it was just so inspiring to see you.
Hi, I'm Jenna. How's it feel to be on the other side? Very weird, but I'm very excited to come back.
And I also wanted to make sure that I introduce our new health and family consumer sciences teacher, Dea Dee Kamana.
Hi, I'm Dee, we are with Ray, with new job. And he does pretty much say what I do.
So I, I do wanna let you know.
Oh, do I have a daughter or a son?
You have, I think you have one of my sons. So, but I wanna tell you, I'm sure you've heard Deb Goodwill.
Oh, yes, I know.
Okay. But you've got good reviews already.
Oh, good.
So the shoes that you're filling.
Are small, but I think they're big, right?
They are, but you know what? Um, sounds like you have kind of fit writing already, so I, I've heard that you are, you have control, but you're kind of chilled. Right? Perfect. So I was like, all right, that's a good thing. So, um, my senior gave me the thumbs up.
Well, and my niece, she, um, was a nickel scratcher, college athlete, and, uh, you know, I have to say, I have been this.
Can you use softball? Can you use soccer?
Whatever you need. I haven't been this excited about our new hires in a really long time. Uh, definitely pre-COVID, um, and there's been so many of them, but, um, we did awesome. We really, really did awesome. I'm so glad that, um, they all said yes to coming to WB.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody.
We hope you have a wonderful year, and you found a new home here. Uh, we've been here a number of years ourselves, and, uh, it's a small community. I know it's very appealing for many people, and, uh, hopefully, it's a wonderful experience for you all. Thank you for taking your time out of your schedules to join us here tonight, and that was pretty crisp for thirteen people. Have a good night, everyone.
I do, I do, if you don't mind, Mr. Mark, I just feel like, since they know, we know about them.
Yes.
So, um, we should introduce ourselves to all of you, because, um, most of us, you will see in the buildings, there's four out of the five of us do have children in the district. Um, so, Mrs.
Hi, I'm Nancy Hubbard. I have a daughter in Major Edwards, Nora. She's the best student in the class. Also a sense of humor. Um, what I want to say about myself, I've, this is my third year, so, um, term's coming to an end, but, um, we'll, we'll see what happens.
She'll be running again.
In a year. This is my first time on the school committee, so, um, it's an interesting, uh, time in the world to join the school committee. It's been going on, so, but I'm glad we're all here in person again, so that's a good thing. Welcome, everyone.
My name is Jason Ponasselli. Uh, this is my sixth year on the committee. I absolutely love it. I have two children in the district. My son, Jason, is a sophomore. My daughter, Ayla, is eighth grade. Uh, I'm also an educator for nineteen years in a nearby district, so I feel your pain, but I also feel all the joys and the excitement. Um, I know why we're all in, right? And so, I just wanna wish you all the best of luck. We are a pretty chilled committee, as they say as well, and if you guys ever need anything, feel free to reach out. Not this, too much, but, you know, if you're familiar with WB, it's a small town, big heart, and next is right down to the student assistant as well, so, well, we're really, really excited to have you.
Uh, Jen Bree, this is my twelfth year on the committee, and I just upped myself for another term, so by the time that term is over, I will have served fifteen years. Uh, I got on the committee when my oldest, who is now a senior, was entering kindergarten. Um, I love serving this town in this capacity, um, and I think that, um, Wendy and any other teachers that you will speak to, the, um, school committee and the union have a really nice relationship, um, and we are very appreciative and supportive of our teachers, staff, and administrators. Um, so, you know, hopefully, when you see our kids' names on your class list, you're not like, oh, God. I have a sophomore and a senior, and I am really excited to see, uh, astronomy, and I saw Chinese and Latin and, and things that maybe, you know, in a small district, if you have something that you're passionate about, um, or that the kids know that you're passionate about, um, wear a place where you ask a question, um, like a trip. Sometimes those things come to fruition very quickly and easily. Um, it's kind of nice to have the ability, to have accessibility to the guy at the top, um, on a day-to-day basis. I taught in a larger district before I had my kids, and they never would've known who the superintendent was if they had fell over them. Um, so it's actually a great thing for all of us to be able to kind of work on a level where we're all together. Um, so I hope that that makes you even happier about the choice that you've made, um, and we're really happy that you're here, so thank you.
This is Nicky Park. This is my third year on the committee, and I can't believe I'm saying this, but I have children in this district, because my youngest was a member of the class of twenty-twenty-one. Um, so, uh, so we'll see what happens when my term is up, but, um, but by day, I am an instructional assistant in kindergarten classrooms, who is the first grade teacher. I feel you. They are fabulous and wonderful and really, really busy, so I feel that. But, um, but I really enjoy my time on the committee. I have seen, in my short time here, I've seen a lot, especially during the COVID, the COVID, um, adjustments that we had to make. There were a lot of news stories, local stories, national stories, about how contentious things were, and there was nothing like that here, nothing, there was no contention. We all figured it out. Everybody knew that everybody else was doing the best they could, and we all figured it out, and I'm so grateful that I was able to be part of that. And that, in the middle of that challenge, you know, my daughter was still able to get a really great high school experience, so we're really, really glad you guys are here.
And I am Jim Doni. I'm also two children in the high school, and I'm in tenth grade. Um, Nancy, I forgot to mention that her and I graduates of Boston as well. Nancy came back to town, and I've never left. That's probably one that I've done for, I think, ten years. All right. Thank you all for coming.
You don't have to stick around, I mean, if you want to.
Yeah, no.
Really excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Best of luck.
Good luck right here.
Any, do you have any input? Um, next item is to vote to approve the contract for our, for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-six. Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion, uh, to approve the contract for Richard Mahar for the years of twenty-twenty-three from twenty-twenty-six.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad you want to stick around.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad. Uh, we have a policy subcommittee report.
Okay. Uh, so the policy subcommittee met, and we have several, uh, items that we were discussing with respect to, um, just trying to get things kind of back in line a little bit, uh, in this building and across the street. Um, one of them was a technology policy about making sure that students are coming to school, they are responsible for having their devices charged, uh, that they have responsibility for replacing devices if they are lost, uh, or damaged, so, uh, we did do some language there. Um, we also discussed the, um, problem with tardies, mostly up here at the middle high school, and just making sure that, um, that language went into the handbook for now. We did not make it a policy, but we do wanna make sure that the students understand that, um, we are gonna make them accountable for being late to school. Um, and that was kind of always in there, and I just think over the last couple of years, we had, um, you know, with COVID, given some latitude, and I think that it's time to bring that all back to, um, having higher expectations, because the kids can meet those if we ask them to. Um, we did discuss, uh, talking about something with absenteeism and whether or not students should be allowed to participate in things like trips and, um, going to things like the prom or other items if they have excessive absences, uh, or are not passing courses. Um, so that is something that we are going to continue to talk about. There has not been any language, um, in a policy right now, because we're trying to decide whether or not it belongs in the handbook, because making a policy that is kind of a one-size-fits-all for students that may have reasons for being out, um, might be a little too extreme, but we, um, are gonna work with Mr. Mahar to kind of work with administration to make sure that students who have excessive absenteeism are being helped to be accountable for their work, um, and anything else that they need to do. Um, and participating in extracurriculars and special things is not gonna happen if they are not present. So, um, we're trying to make sure that that is kind of brought back around, and I know that when I received my email about the class updates after class meetings, it was very clearly laid out for parents that these things were gonna come back into play, specifically the tardies. Um, and I know my kids said they both heard it at the class meeting, so I know it is being communicated out. Um, so, uh, we just wanna make sure that the administration is supported with policies and things in the handbook, um, so that when these things are, are handed down, um, it's not surprising to anyone. Did I miss anything with policy? Was there anything else that we?
No, uh, I'll need the votes real later.
Yep. Anyone have any questions?
Eric? We will move on to communications and reports.
Thank you. So we certainly have started off smoothly this year. Um, we welcomed our first and fifth grade students back to Major Edwards on August thirty-first. Students arrived smiling, we're ready to go back into the routines and get the, the regular school day going. Um, we welcomed multiple new families to our school, with several, obviously, several new teachers that we just, we just met, uh, which has added kind of a nice positive influence to the, to this year's opening. On September first and second, um, we conducted our kindergarten screening for our incoming students, and this past week, uh, we hosted our kindergarten open house, where students learned about their teacher, saw their classroom, took a bus ride around the reservoir, as always, which was very, very much enjoyed. Um, kindergarten students also had their first day of school on Wednesday, September seventh, and our preschool students returned on Thursday, September eighth. Our focus for the first few weeks has been establishing, um, safe and positive environment where the students felt comfortable to learn about, they learned about the routines, behavioral expectations, uh, in many areas around the school. Teachers and guidance staff have focused on teaching what it looks like in the classroom, hallway, lunch recess, during specific times, et cetera. Um, during our first two days of professional development, our teachers participated in a district-wide mental health training. Um, additionally, teachers spent time going over safety and security protocols, reviewing the changes in staffing and classrooms throughout the building, and then our next steps, uh, will be to focus on the implementation of our Haggard, Haggard Definemic Awareness Program in grades K through two, and the completion of our fall assessments, um, and benchmarks for literacy, math, and then using that information to kind of drive our instruction, um, for the school year and figure out the necessary supports that we, that are needed for some students. Just some important dates that I wanted to mention coming up. Tomorrow, we have our picture day, which the kids are very excited for. Our retakes are gonna be on October twenty-seventh, and then next week, on Wednesday, um, September twenty-first, our open house for grades, uh, first through third will be from six to seven PM, and then on Thursday, the twenty-second, we will have our open house for fourth and fifth graders, which will also be from six to seven PM. And then just lastly, I wanted to mention, um, on September twenty-seventh, we'll have our rental night for our fourth, fourth grade students, um, to get ready for band, which is something to look forward to. That's all I have for you tonight, but anything I can elaborate on or any questions I can answer?
Mr. Bonia?
Good evening. As Alex expressed, our students and staff are very excited to begin the school year. We've worked very hard to prepare, uh, the building for the return of teachers, of ten new teachers, several new paraprofessionals. I'd personally thank Mr. Pomriyan for providing us with the resources to, um, repaint the whole high school wing, including the walkers and several of the classrooms. The building looks, you know, clean, and I think it set the tone for the students that we're gonna take care of this place, that we're gonna treat with respect and keep it nice, because the school district went to the trouble of making it nice for us, and I've seen that affect so far in a very positive way. We met many of the new hires tonight, including our new school nurse, wasn't able to make it. Kelly Donnie is doing an outstanding job of updating our policies and procedures, preparing for athletics and for school field trips, learning who the students of the most concern are in terms of their medical needs. She's, she's done a great job, and, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with thus far. As if opening the school year isn't exciting enough?
Yes.
And ten, he said he'll visit coming up on October second, uh, which is a ten-year visit where the NEAS folks come in, um, and they evaluate us, um, in many areas, and, uh, we had our first round with them in twenty-nineteen, uh, but it was very positive, and we established areas of growth. They're coming back to be to check on how we're doing in those areas of growth, see how we fare, you know, with the pandemic and how that impacted our, our building and construction here, and, uh, and to meet a lot of the new bases that weren't here back in twenty-nineteen. We scheduled interviews with, uh, members of the committee, with Mr. Mahar, with, uh, teachers, with some parents, and with lots of students, and we know we'll make a good impression, uh, during the four days of their visit. Our focus, we have a renewed focus this year. Uh, our theme is accountability, uh, holding all of us, ourselves, our students and our teachers accountable for our actions, um, as this is bringing to our attendance, uh, as well as taking responsibility for our academics and doing our very best at all times. I do wanna thank Mr. Charles Swenson for, uh, being our chair for the steering committee for the NEAS visit. Um, he's attended three visits at other schools and others to prepare for the visit to our school, and he put us in a position to know what to expect, and I appreciate his, uh, his efforts in that way. As you may know, our middle school is in the middle of their fundraiser, their, their one big fundraiser, which is on Magazine Drive. The kids are earning money, which they will then be able to use towards their trips, the major's classroom trip on October eleventh, the Washington DC trip, which will be for grade eight in May. Um, we were excited to be able to return to these trips after a couple of years of not being able to do so, and, um, now that travel restrictions have been lifted, um, we return to these trips during the normally scheduled times of year, major's classroom in the fall, Washington DC in the spring. We had a meeting with parents last night of grade six students to introduce a major's classroom trip. It was very well-attended, and they brought their students with them, and we're very excited. I'd like to compliment Amy Smith, as well as several of our new, uh, coaches in our sports program, for a very exciting and positive beginning to the school year. Um, you know, records aside, one and O, two, O, O, two, very early in the season, but the students' attitudes have been absolutely outstanding. Dr. Lozart compiled some statistics, and we discovered that we have the greatest percentage of participation in sports at this very moment than we've had in ten years. So if you look across the board, the kids are involved in sports from grade section twelve, the highest it's been in a decade, which is awesome, which is really, really awesome. Um, and that doesn't even include the plays, the musicals, um, the chorus, the biners, and that kind of stuff, so all very positive, uh, things. We're excited for homecoming next week, for Spirit Week, uh, for the dance, for the homecoming games, uh, for the party, and, uh, we do the other exciting local event events. Um, and, uh, we're very pleased to, uh, begin the school year with so many highly brought by new members of our staff. In closing, I, I would like to, um, ask for your support for two, uh, field trip ideas that our foreign language department has been working on, probably through the pandemic, been waiting for some light at the end of the tunnel. Um, the first is a trip that is for, mainly for the students in the French program. It'll run through a Canadian company, Jump Street Tours, interested in bringing students back to Quebec City, which we did a few years back, uh, in January of twenty-twenty-three, uh, and our department chair for foreign languages, Ms. Perkins is here to answer any questions you might have about a proposed Quebec City trip. The second is a brand-new idea, which should be through a, uh, Spanish travel company, Ameno Tours, and it, the idea is to bring the students to Puerto Rico, uh, in February, March of twenty-twenty-three, um, so that we have an opportunity to, to see a Spanish-speaking part of the world. The information is a packet that Mrs. Perkins provided, and, uh, I'd be asking for your support for introducing this to families and seeing if there would be interest, and then taking the next step, which would be, um, now that we have interest, let's see how many kids we can accommodate and, uh, and try to make this happen. Mrs. Perkins has done a lot of research, and I will allow her to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
So, I do. So I'm assuming that Quebec City, when we go to Canada now, we do need a passport, right?
Yes, you do need, students will need a passport for Quebec. They will not for Puerto Rico.
For Puerto Rico. Um, that's MLK weekend, and I was looking at the itinerary, they would leave Friday morning at five AM, so they would just miss Friday as far as missing school.
I believe on that Friday.
Are we out that Friday?
I think we have school committee meetings, but the students do not.
Oh, okay, so there's no.
Fresh development.
Oh, okay.
It was very strategically planned by.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to like, okay, so that, that then, barring the exception in Canada for an extra day or two, is that what happened last time?
Yes, but one of the reasons why, you learn because you don't, you know, examine the following week, so I sort of planned it so that Monday is a day of recovery, the kids get back late Sunday night.
Oh, perfect.
It's very packed, but they have Monday to recover. No excuses for why they can't go to school. They have a full day of rest.
Perfect.
And we built in, if there is a, a mother.
We have a day.
Or a store.
Yeah.
Like we rent into.
I was gonna say, that did happen last time.
Yeah, we got to see the, the tree playoffs, so it was pretty fun. I was like, the only patriot panel.
I remember you calling me saying, hey, can we stay another night? And I was like, you're okay with that? And it was worked out, they were very accommodating, you got home safely, and kids get a little extra bank for their bucks, so that's good.
Jump Street was awesome. They, they really accommodated us well and helped with food.
This was the tour company you used a lot?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good. So we, we're, we know them and we're happy with their, okay, with their services.
I would add that I have an appointment with Jump Street tomorrow, because they are interested in running our Washington DC trip. I worked with them for ten years when I was in Westboro.
Excellent.
And they are first-class all the way.
Yeah.
I wanted to be respectful to Capital Tours, given the twenty years that they've worked with us. Um, I feel as though last year was a clear sign that they were, um.
Time to move on.
Moving in a different direction than we wanna be in. Um, so, uh, Capital Tours, thank you. Have a good rest of your career. Jump Street Tours, thank you. Looking forward to working with you again.
Awesome.
And, uh, we'll be with them tomorrow.
Awesome. Well, the one thing that, just as a quick plug for Jump Street, they are so great with kids. They get them. They get them in middle school, they get them in high school, and they can really relate, and that's been my experience, um, and I don't know if that was yours or me.
Ah, phenomenal.
Yeah.
They were with you the whole time.
Yeah, and I mean.
Incredible.
It would've been like ten years since I'd done my first trip, and the head of the company drove from Montreal up to Quebec to the sugar shop to say to me, Wendy is so happy you're back. This is the last time we went. I mean, that is like, talk about family, so they, they, they care, and it feels like a family-run business, but they, they're very, their insurance policies are great for the whole nine years.
Awesome.
Puerto Rico?
I don't know anything about it. It is because I've never done it. I've never taken a group to Puerto Rico. What appeals to me is that, um, it's run by, uh, someone who was originally from Puerto Rico. I believe he was a teacher in the United States, a Spanish teacher as well. This company has been up and running for quite a few years. Most companies, from my research, like ACIS and EF, don't really do Puerto Rico. I don't know whether it's because it's in the US, and I figure that it's better to go to Costa Rica, which is gonna be almost double the price.
Right.
So I was trying to keep in mind issues of cost, passports, and the best bang for our buck with a quality trip that also brings reality to our kids about this is part of us. Puerto Rico is part of our country in many aspects and much of our culture, especially in New York with music and salsa and everything else, comes from Puerto Rico. And how many of us haven't seen the new West Side Story? So that's sort of my ploy. It's, it's gonna be, you know, it's a short flight too. The cost to go to Europe, I think it's just gonna be prohibitive for almost any of us. So this is still expensive, but you know, I, this is sort of the compromise that I came up with and I think it would be pretty awesome. Plus, who doesn't want to go to the Caribbean Islands at the end of February?
The chakras?
Yes, there's a breakdown of chakras for the number, of course, it's a sliding scale. The number of attendees determines the price.
Granted, it is during school.
It is during school. So this is what I've tried to calculate. We come back from February break and it's the next week. So they have essentially two weeks away. But, but it's also a service trip because we work with the school community, at least in one of the days, it's very green aspect, they do the biosphere, they know the culture of school, San Juan. It's, it's, you get a good bang for your buck from an educational perspective, at least that's how I read it, it's not just fun and games, a tourist trip. And.
I imagine it'll be a lot more expensive if you're wearing during the COVID.
Oh, yeah, much more. And then April vacation is on passport, which is Easter, so forget it. And also all the other school groups go, so that's why I love Quebec during that weekend versus Canada Val, because no one's there. We are like, we're like trees like old and if there's spirit and travelers, I'm aren't with the King Weekend.
These dates work, do these dates work around MCAS?
Yes, I've already checked it out with MCAS. MCAS are not till the following week, which I think is Language Arts or 9:10 on the April 9th, March. So they will be well back and it's still good crap.
What grade are we just doing? High school?
High school, yeah.
Okay.
I, from a maturity level, I really feel that high school is a better bet. I've done middle school trips and.
I agree.
It gives them a reason to stay in WEP.
Very, very, absolutely.
Great trip when they get to high school.
I mean, some of the chills I've had, you know, the young girl in eighth grade racking up her parents' credit card before three hundred dollars worth of makeup in Quebec. I'm like, no.
Is that one of our kids?
No, I think it's great and I, I appreciate you doing all the work to put this together and, and presenting it to us. I'm saying I had a friend whose daughter did go to Costa Rica, they live in Colorado, and it was $6,000. So, I mean, it was a lot of money. So this to me is a little bit better for.
Well, we'll see, we'll see what the response is. I guess it comes down to that if it's approved, you know, we just have to see what people can do. I'm not sure whether you folks can inform me or not, whether, should it be approved? What availability of fundraising is? I don't know how that works, I just don't know. So that would be another question. And the other thought too is alternating years, should we get into an international travel thing so it's not too burdensome? You know, like every other year, just then kids will have the opportunity, well, it'll be in 2014 or 2025, junior, and I got two years to save.
Right.
So that's another, anyway, I don't want to jump the gun, but those are just some of the aspects that we might be, we're thinking about.
Prices on the Quebec trip?
The Quebec trip is blocked out, you can see it, but if I'm recalling, I think for the mat, like for 30, it's like seven, seven eighty for three days. I mean, the kids do not come up for air for three days. They literally do not come up for air. And then it goes up to 900 something if we only have 20. So, and of course, as you can imagine, the cost of gas and hiring a coach bus, I'm sorry, that was colored.
Oh, sure. Oh, got it, okay.
I'm sorry, it's like, maybe your eyes are better than mine, but it was like 785 to nine seventy-five or something.
Wasn't the Baltar for Washington DC?
Yes, but it's only three days.
Oh, but you're leaving the country and.
Exactly.
You're dealing with.
And you see so much, I mean.
It's boss, right?
Coach bus, yeah. But I just have to tell you, it's, the biggest rush is going tubing down that, makes them a show. It is so awesome. You take rotos up and up and then you get like a donut with eight of the kids and you go spinning. I still haven't done that at first, one of these days before I hit seven. That is great. And they do dog splatting. They do, the Museum of Civilization is awesome. It's way in Quebec City. They get to spend time with the city pavilion in Quebec City, they can shop. It's still decked out from Christmas with a Christmas light, so you feel like you're in fairyland, it's quite beautiful.
And we've had a successful run with this trip and this company, so we have a reason to believe that it would be even better, or at least as good as it was.
Anyway, thank you for listening. Thank you.
So I guess the next step to get interest?
So I guess if you, if you voted to approve the idea that we would be able to talk to our students in the foreign language classes about it and get a headcount of which families might be interested, at that point, we might post a parent informational evening to see if the community would support it as well.
So I guess what I would say is we can't vote this tonight because it's not, I don't know what it is. So what you could do though is you could, I don't see any harm in asking for interest first and then asking for hopefully another vote.
Yeah, we could, when we come back, we could say, these are the numbers of students that we have that would be interested and that would be a good day, good day for the community.
My only thought was, I don't know how to reach the students at this point who are not enrolled in classes and are going to be taking classes in the spring, or who have maybe upper-class people who have fulfilled their requirement and still want to go.
Right, but that's where you have me. I have all those guys, no problem.
Okay, cool.
I think too, I mean, utilize Cam as someone who would know who else is taking French and to spread the word about, you know, hey, who wants to come? And, you know, the students that you have now, tell them to talk to their friends about, you know, hey, this is what Mrs. Perkins has put together. I'm sure my word of mouth for the kids too, that that would help get some interest.
I do have a question, as a foreign language teacher, I don't know if this is something that you'd want to consider. Ideally, it would just be those who are taking French or have taken French or are interested in French. On the other hand, would we open it up to anyone who's interested in going, who, again, we don't want students who are not doing well academically.
Right.
Behavior is important, we represent West Royal, even though we're far away, and that to me is really important. And I really, really am very, very adamant about making sure that behavior, as representatives from the United States and particularly from West Royal, that's really on the up and up. So I want kids to be in good academic standing, but do we open the doors to non-French students or not? Do we honor those?
Quebec City is an international city, so any student that wanted to go to a place like Quebec City, if they're not going to bump up kids in the French program, if they want to go and they're going to help the program to run, I think we should be able to.
Yeah, I agree with that, I mean, like, start with French first.
Right, yes, get an upper count, yeah.
And then have, have a, you know, a criteria that meets, you know, what, you know, what's required for you to go beyond French, right? And that, that bill we needed to, because that just helps the program as far as numbers and cost and things like that. But I do think the French students should have a priority. The number of French, number of years, really, right? So, so it's in four years of French, they should be the top priority.
Well, any, you know what, our program's so small, but anyone who's taking French in high school should be, you know, because you learn no matter what. The guys are great, they do a blend of the language and they teach too, so it's awesome. Of course, it's KDAQ, but that's okay too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, Sherri's not with us, did you have anything for her or not? All right.
We do, excuse me, we do have two expenditure reports and I think we have a ton of time this year, they're basically a work in progress until we get all the pieces of the puzzle put together. We saw some of the pieces of the puzzle were introduced tonight, that's all we need for it. The staff has been signed, sealed, they delivered, then we will encumber those funds. We look at the end of the August report, it tells us we have available funds of $10.4 million. If that was the case, then I think we didn't hire a lot of people, whether we have to hire or whatever. None of this hours has been accounted yet, once everybody's in place, they will be encumbered and the report will be a little bit more meaningful. It still shows you the budget for each category for the new FY '23 year and it shows you the expenditures that July and August. Also, with the package, we did receive trial balance. Trial balance gives us the funding for our grants, our revolving accounts, our school lunch program, our trust funds that we have. Another footnote on that, as we have said in the past and we'll say again in the future until we change our software system that we use here, minus is good. So if you see the end of the column, it says ending balance and a minus, that's good. If it's not a minus, then we're in the hole, so just the opposite. On that, you can see grants, they speak for themselves, they come in, they go, well, they wash out. School lunch program, nice, healthy balance in that program this year, that's basically due to the free lunch program. And we are, we're operating again this year for all of you that know, and it helps, it improves our fund balance in our financial aspect of it by them paying for the total cost of the program. All the revolving funds are, were in good shape at the end of the year, with the exception, as we usually do, revolving athletics. Revolving athletics was in the hole, $18,000 and we had to transfer out of school choice to revolving athletics to balance. Other than that, certainly break the school choice, healthy balances in both of those, all the stats, you can see the balance we have in that account. And then you can see the student activities, the last two on page, both those negative, so that's good.
Thank you, Roger. Any other questions?
Couple of other items, on facilities, okay, on summer maintenance projects, this was one challenging summer for us because a couple of reasons. The main reason is when you have 40% of your custodial staff out for the whole summer, you have maintenance projects and everything else that has to be done is a challenge, okay? We did get, get quite a bit done, we still have a lot left to do that were in progress, some things are still ordered, some things have been made yet and so forth. Just sort of delay, we'll be using subcontractors to do a few things that we normally do, outdoor maintenance here and there, building outside is beautiful, stuff like that. So still work on, working on it. Two of our capital items, which was the fire system across the street, okay, and the bathroom across the street. Fire system is half, did the main portion of it, and there's a new system we've started out. Get another quote on the dry system up on the third floor of the building. And then with the chief one, initially when we sat down and met, the whole in hands, it was better installed, works fine on it. The other thing is the bathroom, the bathroom, we have to get prints for, we have to some draw it up. So that's kind of, it's taking a little bit longer. We have gentlemen that worked with us before of the roof here and on generator is going to draw up just a little mini set of prints, okay, it's A, S, B, A, D, A, so forth and so on, as you know, plus building inspector definitely wants prints, so we just can't knock down the wall here and there and throw the bathroom in, so we work on, pretty much during vacation time, we're looking at probably get it going or get it complete. That's probably it on that. As far as transportation, blessing, it's pretty smooth to start off the year. Our transportation, we're still looking to purchase another van, okay? We're working just to find one, there's another story for another day on that end. But we have a $5,000 commitment from the great communities project from the town that will fund $5,000 papers. I just give you a little quote, I guess the prices are total electric Ford transit vehicles, 12-passenger, 11-passenger, 10-passenger.
Let me guess.
Total electric.
$150.
Pretty close, $120,000. I said, I can go out right now and buy three Toyota Sierra hybrids, okay, that get 35, 36 miles in a gallon, that's what we're looking for right now, we're all over the place looking for that. On this, here, everywhere, okay? And that would qualify for us as a hybrid, to give us a green energy on it. So if I buy three of them, put the price of one of those. Case closed, so the bus company on that, that's $120,000. The hybrids were, the others were coming in $37,000, $38,000. Yeah, we're still looking for one, right now we're doubling up on one of our routes out there. It'll work for the timing, but you end up getting complications when there's half a days of school here and there and so forth. If we have one of our elevators go down, now we're.
In trouble.
Now we're in trouble. We're working on that. As soon as we find one that is available, that the dealers call us and tell us if they can afford for, even if you go through the state headquarters, there's either nine months And so that's all I got, as far as summer maintenance goes, we're still working on it and we will continue working on it. Alex mentioned he has an open house next week on Wednesday, Thursday, we have a few things to do over there to tidy up the place, which we will do for.
Anything up here on the boiler?
On the boiler, right now, we're just waiting to go through the green, we're gonna sit with the new town manager, okay, and go, she wants to meet on our capital projects on it, and go over that, we put on the green communities topic list for all the money that they have to fund. We're going back and forth, as you said, with, you know, looking at rebates and stuff like that in the program. Who told me that? You sent me some emails and stuff, there's just, there's no, there's nothing available.
Not available, that's it, it's really expensive.
Right, and to go the other route, to change the system over that we use to heat the building, as it said, it's about pricing. So we're gonna.
Unfortunately, it would be nice to, it would be more energy efficient, but.
Yeah, oh yeah, there's no doubt about that. We have to do some other things over there on the steam system itself, which we met with the studio staff last week and looked at it and said, you know, we're gonna refine some of the things on this that would make the steam more efficient. You know, we're gonna put it up, steam, steam boiler ready. It's, work as my favorite thing tonight, it's working for us. That's where we're at.
Thanks, Roger. Anybody else in the committee have any questions for us? All right, that's just two, pressure.
New package, the update on transportation and also updates as of September 1st on enrollment members for school choice, vocational enrollment and homeschooling as well. Opening day, staff participated in mental health first day training facilitated by the Shrewsbury Definement Services. They were here three years ago, they'll be back again in three years. It's a certificate that shows that staff have been trained in this and it's been for three-year curations. So that was very well received. Paraprofessionals for the first time joined, shared trainer Kristen Suzy and Rebecca Roche for training here in the library in the first day of school, that was very well received. Mrs. Trainer was blowing, that was one of the veterans in Paris, that was the best training she'd ever been to, so Sherri is here today to give that. Transportation was very smooth on opening day. I know the line in Edward sometimes is problematic the first couple of days, very smooth. I know the phones weren't really buzzing that much. Thank you, Mrs. Pratt, for combining the lists and coordinating.
Thank you, Mrs. Pratt, for combining the lists and coordinating communication with AA. New website. We will have a new website up and running hopefully within the month. Eric, we did a conference call with a gentleman out in Death Valley, California. I think it was a hundred and fifteen degrees outside that gentleman's home when we were discussing. He provided a number of formats for us to view. I did share their recommendations with the administrative team, and we came to the consensus of, and it's number sixty-eight will be the go-to for us. There will be an app involved. Everything should read. It's somewhat minimalist, but it's definitely improving what we have now. So that should hopefully be up and running within the next thirty days. Federal grants were submitted for Title I, Title II, and Title IV on Monday. And Mrs. Trainer submitted the two forty grant, which funds most of our paraprofessionals. So those have all been submitted. And I'm very pleased to have met the new town administrator, Jennifer Warren Diamond, twice this week. I've had a few phone conversations with her as well. We're off to a nice start with a very sound and productive communication about the district's needs and some of our pressing capital expenses, which are no surprise for those of us here. I did share our five-year capital projections up to two thousand twenty-seven. And I have a meeting with her next Thursday to obviously discuss some details and some of the things that we talked about through strategic planning and through the quality of this report. And I'll be back to you. That's all. That's all I have. Anything else? Any questions?
What are the fractions on the, is that dating the whole year?
Yes. Yep, that's it.
What is T E C connections?
Tech.
Online.
Oh, it's online. Okay.
Is it online? So students don't come here and all?
They do not come here at all.
So are we paying in some way for that?
Yes.
We are?
Yes. Not the full nine point eight. There is some money that is budgeted for that. I don't have that off the top of my head. It's not that full of.
So it's not homeschool?
No.
So they're not rest schools to the district's students, though?
No.
But they live in town?
They live in town, yes.
Okay, so they're, they're using a curriculum that we're paying for?
Yes.
Why is that not homeschool? I don't think I've ever seen this before.
No. The Tech Academy came about during the pandemic. The pandemic was rivaling with Commonwealth Virtual and Rainfield. So it used to be, that was the sole idea.
Okay.
And actually, you know what? That number is not accurate.
Nine point eight?
It is not nine point eight, because we went back and looked in the portal for current enrollment and two are back.
Two come back here.
Yes. So that's how we updated that. That's my memory. Yes.
You know, we discussed that, yeah.
Yeah, two came back, yeah.
Is that something that we have to offer? Because I feel, I'm like, so if they want to do an online course, why don't, I mean, I know virtual high school doesn't cover it, but that, if that's home online, how is that differentiated from homeschooling?
They have a program homeschool, we have to approve their program.
So they're, they're not part of our district homeschool, they are.
They are.
So if homeschooling my kids, I would come up with the curriculum.
Right.
And you guys would prove it.
Right.
But this is like a virtual high school.
Right. I just don't feel like it's kind of.
Okay.
I got it, I guess, kind of.
Expensive offerings.
Okay, right.
What is this list?
This is AP exam scores.
Yes, that was the question.
So the only, so the one thing about the AP courses, and I had looked at, and I think it's the block. Our kids are taking fewer AP courses than, and I looked at Tohonto simply because scope and size, because they only have so many opportunities to take them. And I know my own kid was trying to figure out how to make two AP courses work, and it didn't work. He's only taking one. So I'm hoping that if we move to this other model at some point of the schedule, then it will allow kids to take more and hopefully maybe have more offerings. I mean, sounds like we might be able to do that.
If you look at like what we offer, it's pretty competitive with what other schools our side has offered. It's how kids can fit.
It's hard to fit.
Their schedule, because they're only on state board classes at a time.
Yep.
So kids are saying, I mean, right now we have juniors, there's juniors taking AP Calc. Whereas when I first started, we had AP Calc, and it was one kid. And we tell teaching, you can't teach your class with one kid.
Right.
Now we have juniors taking it. And last year we had a class where there were almost fourteen kids.
Do the juniors and seniors in that class at the same time?
No, just juniors. And many of our seniors, to their credit, specifically twenty of them, are taking honors classes. They're like, I'm gonna get just as good with calculus course. I'm not gonna take the exam, because I had to choose to take AP Physics, or AP Residency, or AP Art, or something else. So definitely one of the pluses of the new schedule would be the opportunity for kids to probably take. They don't, I always recommend taking more than five, but sometimes our kids get blocked after they take four. They don't have an opportunity to do it.
Or college is wanting to take it, so. So this is last year's, so this is the last time it happened.
I do, the AP Calc scores last year were.
They were disappointing, and honestly, they've been disappointing for a couple of years. It's pleased to see that we've had like as many fourteen kids taking the class. I question whether all of them are actually qualified to be taking the class. In the past, we let kids take the AP, and if they didn't want to take the exam, they just took honors credit. We've been pushing the kids to take the exam. We also had.
There's no downside of revolving athletics, right?
No, I mean, you just don't get this.
It doesn't look great in the district, I guess, but.
And we had an internal discussion with the math department, and we met Amanda tonight. She's new, she's starting AP Calc. Little known secret, Mr. Ward's retiring. New math teacher, or somebody else who might be interested in teaching AP Calc. So I would say by this time of year, you know, Mr. Swenson will be excited to hand the time to one of our new teachers to teach AP Calc. And hopefully, they'll see themselves. Right?
Sounds good. Any other questions for Richard? All right. That's that, and we will move on to taking a vote on our student targets. Can I get a motion to vote to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school committee targets?
Make a motion to vote to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school committee targets?
I get a second.
Second, what's second?
Any discussion? I think that they have to review, conversation to retrieve, because that probably means we'll be agreed to there, so. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next to vote to approve the first reading of policy, I J N D V, acceptable use of technology. I get a motion.
Motion to approve the first reading of policy, I J N D V, acceptable use of technology.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any conversation, any conversation, discussion?
This just goes back to, I think this is where we changed some of the language for responsibility of students, making sure that their devices were charged and that technology was being returned and taken care of appropriately. Or there would be restitution for damaged devices.
Should that be in the policy?
It is.
It is.
Now, what, what it actually is?
Huh?
What the actual, what is the wrong one?
So isn't that probably the same one?
That's, oh, oh.
It's, 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 yes, it's all the pages of it. On the last page, bottom.
Oh, okay, all right. This policy is duplicated on another page as well. These are all the same, the numbers one through five, all W B P S technology users will talk to different pages.
Oh, yeah, that's what you're doing.
So we can omit a whole bunch of that. I think that's it.
Yep. All these are.
News.
I see.
All right. Any other stuff? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next one is policy J E D V. I get a motion for first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of that, I hope.
Yes.
Approve the first reading policy, J E D V, student dismissal precautions.
Procedure.
So.
Procedure.
Procedure.
It does.
Oh.
Yeah, we need to change that.
Which is my, the agenda says procedure, it says precaution, that's supposed to be.
Okay, procedures.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so under discussion, precautions should be procedures.
Correct.
And what was in section E of the rules?
That was a reference in that student should only be dismissed from the main office.
Okay. Doesn't necessarily.
No.
All right. Any other conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is to approve the first reading of policy, J J, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. I get a motion.
I make.
Go ahead, Jake.
Make a motion for the approval of, I'm sorry, I make a motion for the first reading of policy, J J, co-curricular and extracurricular activities.
I get a second.
A second.
Any discussion?
So this was, we updated some language in here in the bold, where it says extracurricular activities will be available to students enrolled in West Boylston Public Schools, including homeschool students and students enrolled in programs that are supervised by the West Boylston Public Schools. Students enrolled in private schools and charter schools are not eligible to participate in these district-sponsored activities. This came about because apparently someone who is enrolled in either a private or charter school was inquiring about doing activities here. So, you know, it's, it's not open if you are at a school that has a program that's available to you. If you choose to leave here, you don't get to choose to come back and participate in the things that are available for our students. So that language was updated in order to preserve those spots for West Boylston students.
Is something that needs to be added here, or is it covered somewhere else, you know, things like athletics?
It's covered, I think, in LA.
It's language. All right. Any other discussion?
What we were talking about earlier, Jen, when you were updating us on the policy subcommittee, about there being, you know, you need to have attended school and be passing your classes and all that. Should there be language in here to reflect that, or is that covered somewhere else?
I believe it's, there's something in the handbook.
Okay.
So when you make it a policy, it's a little more structured in, because there are so many situations that.
No, I didn't exaggerate your circumstance.
That varies. So where the language is in the handbook, it gives the administration the ability to enforce the, the language in the handbook. Policies may get, if it's policy, it's a kind of a one, one-size-fits-all, and it's a little more difficult to be understanding of, exaggerating circumstances, I guess. So we're gonna leave that language in the handbook. And just, this here, though, this, this is not something that needs to be great. This is black and white. If you don't go to school here, you don't get to do this.
I agree with that completely. I had, it was probably the same parent, we had to count it, ask three or four times.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll just leave, just a little clear report. Before we get to the district, because it's kind of mentioned in this policy that with the handbook, we discussed it through retreat, and then we're gonna have ongoing conversation through the, and really tighten that up and go through that, some of the reflection here as well, so.
We're forming a committee of staff to review some of the language in the handbook, to make suggestions of languages being updated. And then our plan is to present portions of the document to you guys as suggestions, so that when we meet at our retreat, we'll have a document that represents an updated version of what we found.
So there's no plan of updating it piece by piece throughout the year?
I think we're gonna update it as draft, and then as you approve pieces of it. We can either update it live, or we could update the document as a process. And then when it's ready for your review as a process, we can vote it in as this is the new handbook for twenty twenty-three.
All right. Thank you. Nancy, anything you want to bring up?
No, I just want to thank everyone for all the updates. And I'm hoping to get an update in regards to where we're at with the playground, maybe because, I mean, I know Julie, the representative from school committee on Parks and Rec, so. I know that I, I speak for a lot of families, including myself, that there's obviously a lot of concern, disappointment, discouragement around that it's not finished, so, yeah, hoping.
That should be coming soon, after three other updates.
Great, awesome. Thank you.
All set?
We're all set, thanks.
Jake?
Nothing to say at this time, wish you all a great start to the school year.
Thanks. Jen?
Okay. No, nothing to have a, a good school year. Glad we got his back and something on.
Jen really wanted us updated in the part player, huh? So here we go. The playground is not done, because they ran into unforeseen problems. The primary issue is the grading of the playground is not right. I don't know where the problem is, and currently working on investigating that. But essentially, the long and the short of it is, grades were shot to keep a slope appropriate slope for ADA requirements. They have somewhere along the lines, we were told, I believe by O'Brien's, I'm not quoting on that, that that structure, the main play structure, the largest one, is movable up and down. It is not. If you move the ramp, then this piece needs to be moved, and that piece needs to be moved, and that piece needs to be moved, and then there are other steps and pieces that are part of it that can't be moved. So you end up with things not lining up. Then, changing the grades may potentially affect the grades of the rest of the equipment. That is high level problem number one. One of the other problems is there are a few pieces that were found that need to be replaced on the existing play structure that go all the way to the ground, and therefore need to be done before a quarter place goes in, because you can't put anything new in the ground once the quarter place goes in. That's why we bought new play structures ahead of time. That's why we did the whole entire area in quarter place, is because there wasn't going to be room for expansion. So there's an eight to ten weekly time on those. So we are not going to get the parts in time, most likely, to be able to have them installed before we get to a point in time in the season that is applicable to install a quarter place. So, and then, not that this is really a direct effect of delay, the installation of the new structures has not been going well, being done within the D P W. And the new D P W director has expressed his concern about the D P W doing the project, and no fault of his own, because it was his predecessor that signed up for this, which never should have been done. And I'd like to go on roughly the same, this is what happens when we try to do things on the cheap.
on the cheap in-house, never works outright, and we don't have anybody to hold accountable but ourselves. So the project should have been added and refunded from the beginning, and the right people should have been hired. The process we're going through right now, the DPDW director wants no part anymore of installing any of these structures. He's willing to help out with the grading and the subdays, which was a part that was also a piece of it. I should add that I met our new town administrator, Kevin, yesterday on the playground to do a walkthrough, luckily it timed out perfect, the range stopped right as we were supposed to be, so we went, both, all three of us looked at all of the issues. So the process now is to work on, Kevin is getting quotes on replacing the pieces that need to be replaced, and also installation of the new structures that we've already received. So the DPDW will basically be hands-off, other than helping with the subdays. Last night, at the CBC meeting, so as you all recall, the CBC allotted $250,000, but stated it was, even though it was not, it was not part of the motion or the vote at town meeting that restricts them allowing us to use all $250,000, but stipulation was said, any money that comes from grants or anything will be taken off the $250,000, and it would be a $250,000 project. For example, we got $150,000, Representative O'Day, for the project, which means CBC was only gonna fund $100,000. So without having any kind of real numbers, because this literally came to my attention Monday morning, and I was able to get it added to the agenda last minute because it was an unforeseen circumstance, so we are allowed to make modifications in those situations, and then I met with, I said, Kevin and Jen, and we went through everything. The CBC allowed us to up the project to $400,000, so essentially, keep the $250,000 we originally asked for, plus the $150,000 from Representative O'Day. We don't know at this point if it's gonna be enough. I've discussed with the town administrator, possible contingency plan that they'll deal with if we need to. So it'll be a town meeting vote, though. So we, you know, the members of the committee, even though there isn't a restriction on the $250,000 legally based on how the vote was done, are not comfortable with allowing it to go through without a new vote, giving the public the opportunity to know that it's not a $400,000 project, potentially, not a $250,000 project, because they wanted to, you know, I agree with them, they didn't want to be like, okay, you pulled a fast one over on this because you said it was this, but now it's this. So there'll be a warrant article for town meeting in October to approve the additional funding. Can I send them?
No.
Can I?
Very detailed.
Can I ask you a question?
Right off the cuff.
So, did no one inspect those structures prior to starting this whole pro, like, how did we figure out, or when did we figure out that several of those structures over there needed to be replaced? I'm guessing...
Nobody answers that, right?
Did we not have a company that was supposed to be involved in...
No, the DPDW was installing.
Not the DPDW, but somebody else who was kind of... Orion, who was there?
Oh, there, they were doing the port in place and sold us the equipment.
Okay, so nobody, nobody knew prior to just recently that the structures that, are they compromised? Like, what's the story with what's going on with those structures?
There is somebody that does a safety inspection, and it would not pass according to that person. There's some rock in some areas that needs to be addressed. So, and it, and again, if it wasn't for the ported place piece of it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a big deal if it could change later. You know, you could, if, if the fact that it goes into the ground, then it's basically like, change it now, or you're stuck with it, and now you're gonna end up with a bigger problem when it, when it fails permanently down the road.
Because then you have to kind of get it out of the ported place, which would require a whole nother construction project.
You would, from what I've understood, and have been told, you would have to rip up all of the ported place that was put in and do it over, you can't just cut out a piece of it and put in another piece of it, yeah.
Okay. So we have no choice but to replace these structures that are failing, or we take them out and don't replace them and just have less equipment, is that basically what I'm talking about?
Well, it's the main structure that is everything, so if you took that out, that would, well, I mean, I call it the main structure, because it's a lot of small ones, but that's, that's, yeah.
The centerpiece.
It's a huge, single piece.
With the slides and the rock walls, and, okay, so that whole piece.
Yeah.
So on...
Which is also what is controlling the grades because of the ramp.
Right.
Right.
So that entire structure needs to be replaced?
No, no, it's just a few pieces of it, but...
Is it, that's, that's got the capability of having pieces taken off of it to be?
Yep.
Okay.
And some of the other pieces that need to be replaced are not in the ported place, so, I mean, it's, it wouldn't necessarily, but they also have long, they have long lead types anyway. They, they wouldn't have to happen now, but, I mean, they should, they should.
So we would need to get pricing on the pieces that are, need to be replaced in the structure that's in the ported place?
Yes, which is being sourced right now.
But, as you said...
And I'm working with, I'm actually, she called, left a message, I wasn't available, but I put a call into the landscape architect already. We did this, and I'm gonna have a conversation with her about the grades and see what it takes to get her back out to, I guess, I don't know, she has to review the grades, I'm not, I don't remember who shot the grades before, but I did have an idea.
Can I just point out that Mr. Pedone is a volunteer for all of this that he's doing, and has a full-time job, and that there should be people in this town who are paid, who should be doing this work? I, I would just like to point that out, you do have a full-time job, you are doing this as a volunteer, and there are people that we pay in this town to take care of these things that don't seem to be taking care of them. I have a problem with that. And the only people that are losing right now are the kids.
Alex, where are the kids playing, are they going across the street?
Right now, we are, currently.
But they're all not able to play?
Right, forever.
In the area that they're at.
What do you mean?
Well, there's like a grassy area, and that's not accessible to everyone.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
So they're sort of like over to the side?
Oh, okay.
Which is a major, yeah.
So essentially, from a timeline perspective, I don't see the ported place going in before the spring, which means that the playground will be closed all through the winter, all through the rest of the fall, and I don't, you know, I'm not even gonna take a chance of getting a date, but it would be hopefully early spring, which would be when the weather shifts, if the other work is done. Well, hopefully the work can be done prior to that, if, if stuff comes in, so may, maybe it's just a, all right, lead times, we waited for lead times, work, the equipment came in, installed them, ported place can go in when the weather turns on, maybe, and I don't know what the setting time is for the ported place.
Right.
You know, if it's quicker, it takes some time to cure, whatever. I heard something, I, it might confuse me with something that takes like a month, but that was, I think, there's a color change that occurs in the first month or something like that, I don't think it means you can't use it, but it takes like a month to get to the right color, something, do you remember that?
I remember you mentioning that, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, so, I don't know, this is all, there's been so much over the past couple, you know, year, year and a half with this.
Sure, three years.
Well, yes, but before, when we actually started action. The Parks Commission also was trying to get Phase Two funding, and unfortunately, the agenda for the CBC was written incorrectly, it said to do a deal, park Phase Two, not ride park Phase Two, so we were not able to have a discussion on it last night, so it won't go to this town meeting, but I think that's fine, because I think we need to worry about Phase One before we worry about anything else, which is what I said six months ago when, when the Parks Commission was approached at doing this, when at that time, a shovel hadn't even been put in the ground for Phase One, so I think we have our priorities, we have additional costs that have been accrued, and we need to just finish this first before we worry about anything else.
Has the company that will take over the project, Grand Confection?
Yes, we're waiting for pricing and stuff like that.
Oh, so it's the same company?
It'll be Orion's, that would now do the install, and, you know, the thing is, is they install these structures all the time, you know, they should be able to come and do this in a fraction of time, the DPDW workers who have never built one of these, per se. Try to save money.
Doing it on the cheap.
And, and what's it costing us a lot?
It's a good question.
And what's it costing?
A lot of time, and it's costing kids that...
Exactly.
May have, we're going on a couple of years now between COVID and this playground at that elementary school that are losing experience. So, that's my opinion. I don't think I have anything else.
Again, thank you, Mr. Pedone, for the time that you've spent working on this, because it is obviously something that is all-consuming, and, you know, at the end of the day, the playground belongs to the town, and so the town needs to figure out what to do with respect to how to move forward.
I will say the CBC was very receptive, as much as they might not have liked it, and the new town administrator is, is doing an excellent job, getting involved and getting activated, dealing with this on days one, two, and three for her tenure here, so, yes, but she's, you know, I, I get a good vibe from her, and I'm hoping for good things to come from that, so.
Jen, I appreciate the update, and Jen, you're right, this is the town's property, but we, I think as a school committee, a district, have a responsibility to the kids.
We absolutely do.
And I think that we, we need to shift now that we have this update, at some point, like, we have to really focus on that and figure out what we're gonna do, because this is in a whole nother year is gonna go by now, let's just say with this. Spring, I mean, that's, that's a whole nother school year. If you, I mean, that's probably the reality, right? It's gonna be June, or whatever.
That would be my guess.
Right, I mean, so...
Nothing with construction, never mind public construction, ever happens on schedule.
Yeah.
So...
No, I'm glad this is a really good update, it gets clarity, but, I mean, it's all of our job to figure out how we can help the kids, all the kids, so.
All right. With that, I'll intubate a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.